Okay, hello everyone and welcome to today's LaRouche PAC Town Hall Meeting with a LaRouche Democrat's lead candidate Diane Sayer. I'm Stephanie Nelson. I'm out here to work on Diane's campaign and today is a big day for the campaign, but I don't want to spill Diane's thunder. So what I want to talk about is a little bit of a political setting for the meeting and the situation that we're in right now can probably seem overwhelming and confusing. And we're out organizing every day, so I can tell you that a lot of people are very hysterical about the situation right now. But all the complexities of international relations, of interpersonal social relations, the insanity of modern finance, just the total weight of the crisis right now. Bob, can you put this up?
Yeah.
Can all be summarized in this really rather simple image of what LaRouche calls his triple curve, because it's got three curves. LaRouche really wants people to understand what he understands and, you know, so we can deal with this problem. But like it says, right, over the course of time, you have the one curve that goes down is the physical economic curve, right? Industry, manufacturing, or farming. And then what gets decoupled from that at a certain point in time, like in 1971 with the decision by Nixon to go with a floating exchange rate, in the Bretton Woods systems of fixed exchange rates and stability. So then the financial instruments have no grounding. There's no reality to them. It's whatever anyone is stupid enough to spend money on or buy, you do it, and that's going to be good. So those then become the focus of the economy, because you don't have a real physical economy anymore. You have a financial economy. And then the money supply, if your economy, if your policy is going to recognize this as legitimate, then you print, you have a certain money supply to recognize and acknowledge the supposed value of the financial aggregates. Like, you know, that's what's going on with the bailout. If I'm, you know, JP Morgan Chase and I say I have a bunch of mortgage-backed securities and I want to borrow money from the Fed for more speculating, there's these pieces of paper that have no real value, but they have a price tag that's, you know, the Fed is willing to recognize, then they'll print money on that basis, you know? So at a certain point in time, that will lead to a collapse. He says this is a typical collapse function. There's other ones that show the actual collapse. Can you, or did you just choose this one? Okay. Well, anyway, so at a certain point in time, it's so out of control, it crashes and you have a hyperinflationary blowout, like what happened in 1923 Germany. And so Lynn came out with this as a pedagogical to help explain his understanding of economy, because he was the only one who uniquely forecast in the precise way that he did the collapse of the Soviet system. So then he went to jail and when he got out, between, you know, going to jail and getting out, the Soviet Union had crashed exactly the way he said it would. And so, so he goes around discussing this and has continued it ever since. And so now we're at that collapse moment, because when the Soviet system collapsed, you had an opportunity where there could have been development. There could have been international cooperation. There could have been a new system. It was a total potential. But what happened instead, right, is that the Western free trade system of globalization, free trade, slave labor took over instead and looted Eastern Europe and Russia. And the fact that the Western, you know, free trade system outlasted the Soviet system did not in any way mean that it was at all any better. So now that system, it is the global system and it's now blowing out. But because of the looting and all the policies and the bubbles, that inevitable blowout has just been postponed and postponed. And the postponing of it, it's still inevitable, but when the inevitable happens, the crisis and the consequences are just going to be that much worse. So that's where we're at right now. And then the other thing to think about in terms of Lynn's understanding of what's going on is that if you look throughout history, there are two diametrically opposed ideas that are constantly at play. And it's that of empire, of the oligarchical system, and that of creativity, of the universe itself and uniquely of, you know, human beings. And so the oligarchical principle is evil, because it consciously seeks to crush and destroy creativity. And what they want is a system just of control, control of resources, control of populations, and that they, this system is passed, right, from generation to generation, really across thousands of years. And it's morphed from various locations, centered in various locations, like Rome, then Venice, and now British, the British Empire, consortium of banks and cartels and monarchs. And so, well, the United States, we were created specifically to take on and destroy and replace that system, that empire oligarchical system. And to be a system of creativity. And that's why, you know, certain policies, like what Alexandra and Diane are going to go through much more in detail, but how to represent that as a policy, creativity as a national policy. Why what Alexander Hamilton thought up with the National Bank and the credit system was just completely necessary. So to do that, to just overthrow a system that's reigned the world for thousands of years, it's not that easy. It's definitely, obviously, didn't get done overnight. The job still isn't done. But, and the British, because the British didn't take it laying down. It's not like, oh mankind should be equal, and they're like, oh, okay. It's been a fight, and because they're committed to their system. It is their outlook on the world and on human beings, and they're committed to it. And they train the next generations to be committed to it. And so, right, at first we waged literal war with them, the revolution, War of 1812. They backed the Confederacy. But then you've also got what they threw at us in the world in terms of just propaganda and theory, like free trade and Adam Smith. And they've always had agents in the United States. For Lyndon LaRouche to call Barack Obama a British agent, and for that to sound odd to people is just wrong. People just don't know their history. Like Aaron Burr, right, was Vice President of the United States, so he killed Alexander Hamilton. But as Vice, and when he was Vice President of the United States. And also, he was working out a conspiracy with the British to split the United States in half and help them reconquer the colonies. And he's Vice President of the United States. So this is definitely in our history. And we've waged a lot of good battles against them, and even the bad ones, that were the unprincipled wars, like the Mexican-American War. Polk was President at the time. There was this huge campaign for where the Nor-, or not campaign, but controversy, debate, about where the northern border of the United States, the border with US and Canada, was going to be. And the Russians were trying to get us to make it much higher, and it would totally block the British from having any access to the Pacific. And so the Russia and the United States were going to own the Pacific. We were going to work with China for development and like explicitly stop free trade, British free trade. So Polk starts a war in Mexico, and then because had we demanded this really high border in Canada, we might have had to go to war with the British over it, but we'd have won. And so he starts a war in Mexico, and he's like, oh, we can't fight a two-front war. And so the border between us and Canada is where it is now. So you have these British agents or puppets all throughout, you know, US history and in the presidency. But at the same time, we also had incredible patriots, both in the US and around the world this whole time, fighting and dying for the ideas of creativity, of mankind. And that really culminated in FDR, in the chance to actually create a global system free of empire. So after FDR, the attacks on the baby boomer generation were to really go after that. And so that this, the thread of the patriots would be broken. And so the culture, rock, drug, sex, counterculture, be stupid, be sensual, that's cool. And then the leadership that represented something else were all assassinated. So that clear line throughout American history, you know, the Hamiltons, the Lincolns, FDR, just that lineage was cut off, except for LaRouche and what he has built as a political movement and all that it entails, the basement, the science work, our organizing on the street, our candidates, our international organization. So it's very good that LaRouche exists therefore and that we exist, because otherwise the world would be, would have been doomed a long time ago to this empire, to this oligarchy. So what we've got right now, back to the situation today, is the transatlantic system is blowing out. And because their species instinct is to preserve their system of control, that which they've been able to have control through, this financial system, it's falling out from underneath them. And so LaRouche is very clear, they will not let an Asia survive their collapse. And that's what's behind these wars. And so LaRouche called it with the murder of Gaddafi, because he was already captured, was an illegal murder, and which was horrible, horrible in and of itself. And then LaRouche said, the real intention behind this is thermonuclear war with Russia and China. Like, well, okay, let's go talk about that on the streets tomorrow. And so we did, and no one knew what the hell we were talking about. You'd go out there, war with Iran, and Iran's on no one's radar screen. No one in the news is talking about Iran. No one knew Assad is killing thousands of people a day. None of that was just common discussion and, you know, blurbs on scrolling across the bottom of CNN or something. So, but, but because Lynn has this clear understanding of what the situation is and what the principle of the oligarchy is, he called it. And so he mobilized his contacts in the military. That's why these generals and these colonels started doing interviews with us and why the Russians responded that the way they did and the Chinese. So now, at this point in time, every day, there's comments coming from the Russian and the Chinese about how clear it is to them that an attack on Iran is a direct threat to their security. They are on combat alert, right? They don't want war, but they're definitely prepared for it. And, but those efforts so far have not backed Obama down, you know, obviously, because he's a British puppet. He's a part of this plan for war and saving their system. So that's why getting him out is the safest thing to do, the most secure, the, like, that's a real war avoidance step at this point in time. But then to also go further and really address what is that issue here in this idea, like why, what happened to decouple these and for this to crash, the real economy to crash? And so Lynn is very clear, the issue, the only two issues is Glass-Steagall and the National Bank and credit system. And just talking about all these other things, like what's your opinion on, you know, Rick Santorum's latest comment about abortion, blah? That muddles the real discussion that has to be had, which is on getting Obama out and getting these, this clear solution in immediately. So that's it for setting things up. Now, everyone, please welcome to the podium Diane Sayer.
Okay, we're going to rearrange the room briefly. All right. Well, first of all, I am happy to let you know that I have now officially announced my candidacy for the Democratic. And on the one hand, you could say it's for the Democratic Party nomination for US Congress in the 5th Congressional District in New Jersey. But those of you who've been listening to Mr. LaRouche lately know that really what the six of us and our soon-to-be expanded slate are running for is to take over the presidency of the United States. Now, I actually am really glad that we started with that spiritual, because this year is the first anniversary of the Town Hall Meeting a year ago on Martin Luther King's birthday weekend, when I had just become a candidate. And, you know, I've noticed that last year and this year, there isn't all that much excitement about remembering Martin Luther King. And my suspicion is that because people somehow hold him responsible for this lunatic that we have in the White House, who is trying to rip up everything that Martin Luther King ever fought for. For example, one major issue which King weighed in on against the advice of everybody funding him and working with him was the Vietnam War. And in fact, he was assassinated exactly one year to the day, the anniversary of his speech at Riverside Church against the Vietnam War. It's interesting when you think about what LaRouche has had to say about President Kennedy, why he was assassinated. Also, Martin Luther King said over and over again that the whole point of equality is eliminating poverty. It was a question of economic justice and economic development. And Martin Luther King, when he spoke, very frequently referenced the Declaration of Independence and the Constitution, two documents which I can't tell if Obama has ever read. And if he ever did read them, he's definitely determined to destroy them. So given that it is Martin Luther King's birthday weekend, we should remember him and make sure that nobody wants to tarnish his memory by associating him in any way with this Nero, Hitler, raving madman lunatic that we have as President of the United States. It's also worth thinking about that, because in the 60s, we were robbed. The citizens of the United States were robbed by a British Empire operation, as Stephanie very clearly laid out. We had the assassination of President Kennedy. We had the assassination of Malcolm X, after he realized that Islam was not just a religion of one particular ethnic group who was making a shift in his views. We had the assassination of Martin Luther King, and we had the assassination critically of Robert Kennedy, who was likely to have become President. And the point of that assassination was really to put the lid on, to say, we're not going back. You're not going back to a country of optimism and progress. And what else did you have? The Vietnam War, a purposeless war except to destroy the United States, and the onset of this horrific Congress of Cultural Freedom, the rock, drug, sex, counterculture, and the environmentalist movement, where the idea is that human life is a cancer on the planet, that there is nothing valuable in human existence except if we can somehow make ourselves very small, get rid of the excess, consume less, don't exhale, you might cause global warming. I mean, it was a real destruction. And if you think back, some of us have been watching, a lot of Kennedy's speeches have been posted on the LaRouche PAC website. And what's very, very striking about Kennedy is he's always thinking from the standpoint of the past and the future, that when he speaks at the inauguration of these dams and these great water projects all over the country, he's saying, people today may not notice that much of a change in your standard of living as a result of this dam. But the people 50 years from now are going to be really glad that you were here and we built this. And that's leadership, where you actually think of determining the future, where mankind is going to be in the future. And that is what I must say is astounding. Now you look at every single person other than the LaRouche slate, running for office, running for President. I finally, you know, I can't stand watching television. It actually embarrasses me, because I find the people on there act so stupid that I feel like I shouldn't watch them. But anyway, I decided I had to look at these candidates, so I forced myself today to watch some of these Republican debates. And, you know, it was awful. It was, and it was stupid, and the people asking the questions were stupid. Have you changed your position on, you know, gay marriage? And all they talk about is sex. Did you ever notice every major issue has to do with sex? I mean, the fact that we're facing nuclear war is not a topic. I mean, it was really astounding, and I feel sorry for anyone watching it. Now I understand why the people we're meeting in the street are so hysterical, because if you're looking at this, you're saying, my God. We have a President who on New Year's Eve, when everyone was drunk, signed into law the NDAA, which says that US citizens on US soil can be rounded up without a trial and detained indefinitely. So you have a President who is going with, I mean, just explicitly the Hitler precedent. I got a response to one of my blogs from somebody, I don't know who he is, but he had apparently done a lot of study of the Nazi laws. And he said, you know, Adolf Hitler had a similar law, but he actually had a time limit. You could only be detained for a certain number of months or a certain number of years. With Obama, it's indefinite. I mean, it really is worth thinking about. And then you look at these Republicans, and not one of them is making impeachment a campaign issue. It's useful, Ron Paul has had a few things to say about the war, but on economics, he's insane. So he doesn't need a war, because the country will be destroyed by his economic policy. But it really is just a wasteland, and this is why people are so fearful, depressed, enraged, because they're looking at the country disintegrating, and they're saying, on the one hand, we have this raving lunatic fascist, and then we have all these little people who don't have a policy. As LaRouche said, it might be okay if one of them moved into your neighborhood, like Obama, you wouldn't even want him in your neighborhood. One of these guys, you know, maybe they could be your next-door neighbor, but they're not qualified to be in the White House. They're not qualified to lead the nation. That's what we're facing right now. And so it is terrifying. And the point of expanding the slate is that with our leadership, and LaRouche is setting a high standard, we have a roundtable discussion with him tomorrow, which will be posted on the website, and our recruitment of others, that hopefully we can change this dynamic in the country. We need Obama somehow removed. And if not removed, think about the impact of a nice impeachment vote. Maybe they can't get him out, but suppose he's impeached by the House, he would be destroyed. He couldn't run for President. He couldn't start World War III. And that would turn over the chessboard. The Democrats would have to find someone else, and the Republicans might have to also find a human. In other words, you would, the whole thing would be different. And there is nothing worth fighting for other than that, because there's no guarantee that we're going to make it. Stephanie referenced this Russia situation. Well, Russia has a new Deputy Prime Minister, Dmitry Rogazin, who was their ambassador to NATO. And he is a very sharp. And he is a very sharp guy, very up on everything we're talking about, the space program, the satellites. He actually went to the Brussels Conference in NATO, that's the last thing, I guess, he's doing before he really assumes his full role as Deputy Prime Minister, and he said, "We in Russia would see an attack on Iran as an attack on Russia." And it is a little different to think about. Iran is a lot closer to Russia than it is to the United States. If Russia were preparing to attack Panama or Colombia, you might imagine that the United States would consider that this was a threat to the United States. That is what we are doing under Obama, and the threat of World War III is not coming from China and Russia, it's coming from Obama. Because you cannot, we have no control in the United States over what will be the policy as long as he's in office, because he is a British puppet. And that's what LaRouche has been trying to get through to the U.S. military, who initially were, they just said, "Don't worry, we're all against the war, we're not gonna let it happen." And LaRouche said, "No, you don't understand. The President is a British puppet. It is not sufficient for the military to oppose the war. We've been able to delay it. It didn't start in November, but there is no guarantee that it's not gonna happen as long as Obama is in the White House." And people have to keep that in mind. And it's driven by the economic collapse, which is, you know, now France has been downgraded, just like they downgraded the U.S., France has been downgraded. This thing is in a total free-fall collapse. So, LaRouche made a point, a lot of you were there at the meeting that we held in Windsor, where LaRouche was with us on the screen, and it was the first time he said it, but I was really happy about it. He said, "We need a bipartisan slate." And he also called, it sounded like he was proposing a bipartisan team running for President, which is a totally wild idea. And he said, "The reason is that you can't trust either party. So you could trust if people were prepared to say, 'We don't, we're gonna act outside the party to save the nation. So we're not going with the so-called party line. We're gonna save the nation.'" So the slate, as we expand, may also, at the moment, the six of us are running as Democrats. I don't know who else we will have on it by the next time we get together, but I suspect it's not gonna just be a Democratic slate very soon. And what we're organizing really is, in effect, a second American Revolution. Because since the shift of the 60s, we've lost our identity as a republic. People have lost what we fight for. And I think it's worth thinking about what was the idea of the nation, which really flowed from a question of what it means to be a human being. The oligarchical view of human beings is simply that we're animals with, you know, opposable thumbs. And that you can tell who someone is or what their worth is by their bloodline, just like you breed horses or dogs or whatever. So that there's some people who, and then they have all kinds of crazy eugenics things people know, you know, like the measurements of your head to your nose and the size, and all this other crazy stuff. And it's all based on sense perception and things, you know, physical measurements. And of course, human beings do not exist, we don't exist in that domain. Human beings are distinct because of a quality of mind. And the mind is not the brain. And it's worth thinking about how this works. I was thinking about the question of classical music, which Einstein described as being one of the areas where you could have pure thinking. What is this about classical music? And then I was thinking of how our mind works. We think of Beethoven's Fifth Symphony. And when you hear the Fifth Symphony, probably everyone in this room, whether you heard it or not, would recognize when the symphony ended, and you would recognize why. And how come you don't say, when you hear this dum 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 dum, you don't say, "Well, that's just, it's just rhythm, and it sounds like someone's got some dried cat guts and they're rubbing a horse tail on it." I mean, that's what's going on physically, right? You've got these cat guts, and you've got the horse tail, and it's, you know, and you've got some wood that makes it even louder than it would be. So how come when you hear Beethoven's Fifth Symphony, if everything's just based on sense perception going through our brain, you don't say, "Oh, someone killed a cat and dried out its entrails in the oven and is scraping it with a horse tail?" What is it that makes something out of this which actually you can find moves you profoundly? And it moves you emotionally, but also intellectually? There's a very profound content to it. Why is it that if you hear someone playing a Beethoven concerto and they play a quote-unquote "wrong" note, how come you hear that it's a wrong note? Right? And that's because of this question of mind. And the thing that's really unique about human beings, and you think about it if you haven't killed it in yourself so far, is that what you see with human beings, this question of mind, is that your mind is always searching for why. Right? And you know that with the little children, they always say, "Why? Why? Why? Why?" Right? But that's what the mind searches for. And because of this quality of figuring out why, what's happened to the human species? Well, the human species, we've only been here on the planet a very, very short time. We've only been here for maybe 2 million years, which is not that long, given that we've, the planet's been here for about four and a half billion years. So 2 million is not a very long time. And only in the last few centuries, really, I mean, less than that, have we gone from a few million people to over 7 billion people. And the reason why that we have been able to do that as human beings is because we possess this quality of mind, which is not in the physical domain, and you can't explain it in physical terms. But the mind can discover principles, like the principle of gravity, which Kepler discovered. And you can ask yourself, "Where is gravity? Can I pick it up and stuff it in a sack, take it away?" No. Can you smell it when you go outside? You say, "Oh yeah, I smell that gravity. Our planet is really locked into that orbit." Right? But it is a principle of the construction of the universe. And all scientists who work on this, you find they take this incredible joy, because as you discover the way that the universe is created and the delightful order in it, then you tend to become very, very optimistic. And also to develop a very great faith that there is a Creator, that there is a reason that you have this order. So human beings have made this incredible breakthrough, that we can have 7 billion of us. And we could have a lot more if we were to fight for people in Africa and South America and Asia to have the same standard of living that we have in the United States, or frankly better, because our standard of living is in a collapse right now. And this question of our having 7 billion people is part of the evolution of the biosphere. Because if you go back 2 billion years or so, what was the life form on the planet? Maybe little one-cell bacteria, and they mostly only could live in the ocean? And then what happened? People have seen our video on Glass Steagall, is some of them developed an ability to live with oxygen, they saturated the oceans with oxygen, it went out, and you began to get the creation of an atmosphere, which then began to make it possible for little forms of life to live on land. And many years later, you began to get animals, as opposed, you get plants, multicellular plants, and different kinds of animals. And what happened was, our planet, in the solar system that we are in, in the galaxy that we are in, is going through all kinds of cycles, which are very big and which we don't really know that much about. But we do know that in the last 500 million years or so, there have been major extinctions, where, and what it looks like is our solar system is at a particular point in these cycles of 62 million years. And not every 62 million years, but every time we get to this particular point, or all of the extinction crises happen when we're at this particular point, which, by the way, is about where we are now. So it doesn't mean we have to go extinct, it doesn't mean the planet will be hit that hard, but it would be stupid to not think about it. So at any rate, what happens is you have these massive extinctions where the planet goes through crazy changes, volcanoes, earthquakes, asteroids, and in some cases, 80 to 90% of all the species on the planet get wiped out. And then following that, new forms of life emerge, which are superior, they're more energy-dense. And you can look at the difference between a mammal and a reptile. When the dinosaurs went extinct, that was the last one, about 65 million years ago, you did have some mammals, but they weren't really, they were little, and I think they didn't have like a lot of fur. Anyway, it wasn't the major life on the planet. It was reptiles. And after that, then the mammals took off. Now, a mammal needs 10 times as many calories per pound of body weight just to exist. So mammals have to consume 10 times as much food as reptiles. But mammals also can move very quickly, like you don't have to lie out, or your dog or your cat doesn't have to lie out in the sun before it can get up. Right? The snakes and lizards, they have to actually lie in the sun and get warm before they can really move. And then snakes, I really think this would be terrible, because most humans actually take some enjoyment from eating. But imagine being a snake, right? You eat this huge meal of a couple of rabbits or whatever, some kind of small thing, and then you don't need to eat for six months. And then you just lie there, and you're digesting the food. I mean, this really is not, I don't think that's a very advanced life form that we should try to emulate. Although the environmentalists, I think, want us all to go back to that stage, because then we'd consume a lot less energy and food. So when you look at the development of the biosphere, and then you look at the development in spite of these dark ages and setbacks due to empire, due to oligarchism, what you see is that the evolution of the existence of human beings actually has corresponded very precisely to what happened with the biosphere. So contrary to this stupid second law of thermodynamics that everyone has taught about how the universe is winding down, and it's all getting farther and farther apart, and one day it's all just gonna freeze, because there's no more energy, and we're all gonna... Actually, what's happening in our universe is exactly the opposite of that, which is a truly fascinating thing. So you think about what happened with the discovery of electricity and the use of electricity. It's very interesting, because the amount of electricity consumed per capita, that is not just the amount per population of, you know, for a huge, a whole nation, but the amount of electricity consumed per capita has gone up hyperbolically. That is, it's natural for human beings to consume more. In fact, us consuming more is part of the laws of the universe. So every time you hear these crazy people talking about conserving and consuming less, they wanna destroy the human race, because you can't go backwards. Because what happens when you do that is you will actually cause a collapse where billions of people die. And that's what we're looking at right now. That's what we're actually looking at in the short term. And people here should think about it, because New Jersey was hit, a lot of the country was hit very hard by the extreme weather, the floods, the tornadoes, et cetera. A lot of New Jersey has not recovered from the floods. People had no electricity for weeks. Now, when does it happen, where you have a major flood or a tornado, and you never get your electricity back? We're not that far from that. We're not that far from that. That's the urgency, that's why we have to fight. So at any rate, what I wanted to take a look at a little bit, because we're gonna have a big fight in the district and in the nation, and we're gonna have to hold everybody who says they're running for federal office accountable to a certain standard. And so what I wanted to look at is this question of the credit system of Alexander Hamilton and the United States. And what we're gonna start with is the very first law of economics, which came from God. Okay, this is from Genesis. "God blessed them and said unto them, 'Be fruitful and multiply and replenish the earth and subdue it, and have dominion over the fish of the sea and over the fowl of the air and over every other living thing that moveth upon the earth.'" That is not, that's actually economics. That's economic science. Okay, all right, next. So just remember that, we're gonna look at Hamilton now. Okay, so this is Hamilton's report on public credit in 1790. And this is really something to consider. We just had the American Revolution. We were broke. We didn't have much infrastructure, we were destroyed by the war. And there was also a big debate about whether we should even try to repay the European countries who had helped us, because, you know, how could we repay this massive, massive amount of debt? And you further had the problem that different states, depending on how much they fought in the American Revolution, had different amounts of debt. So some states had huge amounts of debt, some states had no debt, you know, should we even bother to repay? Why don't we just say, "We won," and leave it at that, and people should be glad, and we're not gonna repay you, thank you? But Hamilton said, "No." And he said, "You have to have credit." And it means, credit's an interesting word, because there's the question of credit, like can you be trusted? Right? That credit. And then there's the actual credit, which is not what you think of when you think of your credit card or massive amounts. It's a question really of shaping the future. So what Hamilton writes is that exigencies are expected to occur in the affairs of nations in which there will be a necessity for borrowing, that loans in times of public danger, especially from foreign war, are found an indispensable resource even to the wealthiest of them. And that in a country which, like this, is possessed of little active wealth, or in other words, little moneyed capital, the necessity for that resource must in such emergencies be proportionally urgent. So he's saying, first of all, we can't just say, "We have nothing and there's nothing you can do about it." You have to have the ability to issue credit so that you can function in an emergency. And it wasn't a bad thing to borrow money from other nations, because it was necessary, because we were in a war, and we had to win. And then he talks about why we have to repay this and how, right? "To justify and preserve their confidence, to promote the increasing respectability of the American name, to answer the calls of justice, to restore landed property to its due value, to furnish new resources both to agriculture and commerce, to cement more closely the union of the states, to add to their security against foreign attack, to establish public order on the basis of an upright and liberal policy. These are the great and invaluable ends to be secured by a proper and adequate provision at the present period for the support of public credit." There's one more credit slide, right? Do the next one then. All right, and, oh no. All right, go back. Okay. So, and this is very interesting, because there was also a big debate, similar to some of the foolishness you hear now, about gold and silver and having these things that are valuable. And what Hamilton said, and he makes it more clear in the paper on why you need a national bank, is that you can have a certain amount of the actual gold and silver in the bank, but when you put money in circulation, if you have a sensible policy of generating growth, you can leverage that. And it's interesting, because he said a reasonable amount of leverage was two to three times, and I was laughing, because, you know, Hank Paulson, when he was head of Goldman Sachs, was the one who argued that the ratio should be 40 to 1, which might indicate why we got into a little bit of trouble. But at any rate, he was very clear that the value was not in the paper per se, or even frankly, in the gold and silver, that the whole point of this currency was that you wanted to gen- That the whole point of this currency was that you wanted to generate growth. You wanted people who were doing things that were productive for the nation to be able to easily borrow currencies so that they could invest and grow. And what he did, which was a point of major controversy, which is why he talks about cement more closely the union of the states, is that he insisted that the federal government must absorb the debt of all of the states. That even though it wasn't uniform, that the federal government was gonna take on all of this debt and pull the country together. And he also knew, and this is very interesting to think about, after the American Revolution and the British surrendered, you know, they didn't leave. They were still here, doing all kinds of mischief and leading up to the War of 1812. They had their navy out there. Every time we sent out a fishing fleet, they would jump on board and kidnap people and force them to be in the British navy. I mean, they were really just sitting there waiting for our republic to fall apart. And Hamilton was acutely aware of this. So the last thing you wanted was for states to be squabbling among themselves about, you know, who has more debt and blah, 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 and we don't like this state, why don't we cut them off? And let's, you know, he said, we're gonna pull the nation together and we're gonna use a national debt as the means of cementing the union. And then what he did was in effect converted this massive debt into bonds so that the European, Europeans who aided us knew that they were gonna get repaid over time with interest, and that they were able to issue other credits so that they could actually invest in roads, in canals, in building farmland, et cetera, which massively increased our productivity. And it is the case, when you do things like that, low and behold, you get a far greater rate of return than the initial debt. So we were able to take care of all of this. And it did require, it's also worth thinking about because everyone gets so crazy about money, and if I ever hear this, "Don't spend what you don't have." I mean, forget it. We actually had to go into more debt at the beginning of the revolution because how are we gonna build anything? There is nothing wrong with debt per se. It's the question of what's, what's it for? In a sense, you can think of the collateral as being the thing at the end of the debt. The canal system, the railroad, the power plant, it may not exist yet. And see, that's the question of mind. Because where is this new economy? Can you see it? But it's in your mind. So you have an idea of where mankind is going, and you're investing in that, and you're prepared to create debt against this thing in the future, as if the future actually were real, which it is. Then, next. There was a big argument on this whole question of scientific progress, and I think this is really, you really get the sense, Hamilton never, and I guess the, the whole thing about the law of entropy and all that nonsense was later anyway. So he doesn't explicitly argue, in a sense, for hyperbolic growth or not, but you can see from the way he thinks that he's always thinking of a geometric increase in man's productivity. And there was a debate because Jefferson really wanted massive investment in agriculture. And Hamilton said, no, we have to have manufacturers. And he said, there's nothing wrong. It's true, you can increase your agricultural production geometrically, it's true, with fertilizer, crop rotation, all kinds of things that you can do. You can increase the output, but it doesn't foster growth in the same way. The real question is, is scientific progress, manufacturers. So he said this. "To cherish and stimulate the activity of the human mind by multiplying the objects of enterprise is not among the least considerable of the expedience by which the wealth of a nation may be promoted. Even things in themselves not positively advantageous sometimes become so by their tendency to provoke exertion. Every new scene which is opened to the busy nature of man to rouse and exert itself is the addition of a new energy to the general stock of effort." And you can think of something like trying to build a tunnel through a giant mountain range. You can say, well, that doesn't, this big mountain range doesn't seem like it's that great of an advantage, and we're gonna have to do a huge amount of work to figure out how to build a tunnel through it. But then what's the result of having done that work? Isn't your society that much the richer for having done that? That much more creative? It's very striking because when Kennedy makes a speech about why we have to go to the moon, and he says, well, why did someone climb Mount Everest? Well, because it was there and it's human nature to conquer these things, to figure them out, to push yourself beyond what you already know. And think again about, about all of this insane environmentalist nonsense about how, no, 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 we're gonna run out of resources. We, we shouldn't do, if it's not there in front of you, you shouldn't use it. You shouldn't figure, you shouldn't make a breakthrough. It's unnatural putting up, and it kills me because how many people who say all that stuff actually wear things that are made out of plastic or nylon or got to the country because they were flown in on an airplane or, I mean, you know, it really is something. So you think of how Hamilton was thinking, it's totally amazing. It's totally amazing. You can see, it's a complete attack on the idea of empire, that everything is mined, it's creativity, that that's what our nation was founded, to protect and develop. Next. So these are things that you gain through investing in manufacturing. This is also from the paper, I don't know why the text, the typing is different. "The division of labor, an extension of the use of machinery, additional employment to classes of the community not ordinarily engaged in the business, the promoting of emigration from foreign countries, the furnishing greater scope for the diversity of talents and dispositions which discriminate men from each other, the affording a more ample and various field for enterprise, the creating in some new instances a new and securing in all a more certain and steady demand for the surplus produce of the soil. Each of these circumstances has a considerable influence upon the total mass of industrious effort in a community. Together, they add to it a degree of energy and effect which are not easily conceived. Some comments upon each of them in the order which they have been stated may serve to explain their importance." And it's worth thinking through the benefits. I mean, think about how much we gain by not having human beings do physical labor. Because if the emphasis is the mind, why do you want people having to scratch out there with sticks or lift things by hand or whatever? You know, there will be probably always a need for certain kinds of, of labor, but the fewer people engaged in manual, you know, labor with their body, the better. Because what you wanna do is liberate human beings to be able to spend more time using their mind. And you also want the workday to not be 12 hours and 15 hours, maybe it should be six hours. And then people can have time to work on playing the violin, work on discovering electricity, learn, you know, 15 languages. And how much richer is your population for being able to do that? And what's the benefit? For example, if everyone doesn't have to do really tough manual labor so that women can actually join the workforce? We are very strong mentally. Then what, what you have is a much richer workforce, there's much more dialogue, there's much more creativity. Because it's not everybody who can only, only can work if they have a certain, you know, lifting power or whatever. So what happens is you actually not only want more people, you need more people. To have a manufacturing, science-driven economy, you actually need population growth. It's required. You cannot have an industrial scientifically progressive economy without having population growth. It's a requirement. Okay, now, this is from LaRouche, and this quote was bothering some of us for a while because it seems really difficult. This is on the question of credit. Says, "The presumption is that the usefulness of the output of production, as measured in terms of the consumption which is temporarily withheld in the name of physically efficient credit, can be foreseen with a sufficiently good approximation that the net result, as measured in terms of physical usefulness, is greater than the amount of consumption which is postponed in the name of credit." Everyone get that? So what's he talking about? He's talking about consumption which is temporarily withheld. And I had once used an example which is, it's a kind of simple, stupid example, but hopefully he, he would forgive me saying this, which is that suppose you have a dollar. So what's the value of this dollar? You could take the dollar and you could give it to someone for a cigarette. Then you have a cigarette. And you could smoke the cigarette, and then it would be gone, and your dollar would be gone, and the cigarette would be gone. Or you could say, well, I'm gonna, I have this dollar, but I think what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna lend the dollar. So someone's gonna pay me back this dollar. And you lend it to some guy who's gonna go out and buy a whole bunch of tomato seeds. And he goes out and he plants the tomatoes, and happily it's a good crop, and he gets like 80 bushels of tomatoes. And he's able to pay you back a dollar fifty. He's able to sell all those tomatoes. And low and behold, you've had a massive multiplication, maybe 20, 30, 50, 100 times what you had initially with your dollar. So in other words, by postponing the consumption of your dollar by saying, we're gonna use this in a sense to generate something in the future, what happens is what you get in the future is multiplied many times over what you have if you had just used it then and there. And, and that's the way to, so every time you hear, that's why it's not in the Constitution that there's a limit on, that we have a debt ceiling. I mean, this is a stupid thing. It really is. The, the question is, what's the nature of the debt? Is a debt which, as Hamilton said, carries within it the means to its own extinguishment? Is it a debt because you are building some major, great project which is gonna generate many, many times the value of the debt initially? Or is it like these bailouts, which actually not only are a debt, but you think about it, $29 trillion now has been spent bailing out this paper, and what's happened to the standard of living? Actually, everything has gotten worse. So you've generated a debt which not only doesn't pay for itself, but it's a debt which was a drain on the population. And then what you have is a dictator, because you only can have a dictator because people generally are not totally suicidal. How are you gonna get rid of Medicare and Social Security and have everyone kill off their mother by the age of 45 and so on? People aren't gonna necessarily be, or be slave labor somewhere. So what you need is a dictatorship because you have to, you have to pay for this bubble. So you have to go for a dictatorship. And, and we are there. We are at the end. And it's very, very dire at this moment because, I mean, provided we don't end up with a nuclear war, which is very, very much right there. It's very much right there. We got a report yesterday on the Syria situat-, you know, I have this image, it's like an arm wrestling match where it's really, really close. Because every time the US military or there's people in Israel as well trying to stop this thing that jam it up, the British do some other thing, and, and we, we have not taken this war off the agenda. So a few weeks ago, there was a very positive agreement where the Arab League said, we wanna send observers into Syria. And Syria accepted, and they sent 22 observers there, and they were able to travel freely around the country, and there were some areas of fighting. It was nothing like what was reported in the news media. And then what happened is this guy who is clearly a British agent claimed that the Syrian government had prevented him from going anywhere, and he hadn't been able to do any work, and therefore the Syrian government was causing all the trouble, and they've now pulled their observers out. And other people on this delegation of observers said, what is he talking about? He claimed he was sick. He stayed in his hotel room for six days. He wasn't even trying to do any observations. Then he comes out and claims that the Syrian government is committing all these abuses when the other people said, yes, there were people being killed and both sides were doing it. So we had, it looked like there was a process with the Arab League, they had these observers, maybe this thing was taken off the table, and now it's right back on again. And it's the same thing with Iran. It is really, the Brits are determined, they have no choice. The empire is finished. They have no choice. They have to get this war. And that's why people have to understand, the only guarantee of stopping it is Obama being removed or somehow, you know, put in a straitjacket where he cannot make this policy, and he's out. He's not a candidate for president. This is unacceptable. But it's very clear. Anyway, so what you have right now is a total pitched battle, which we and the LaRouche movement and the people who are sane enough to work with us around the world, and there's a lot of people thinking this way in China and Russia, but they don't have the advantage of having the history that we have in this country. They were never based historically on a credit system. So they cannot address the crisis. If the US goes down, it's not gonna work. We have to restore this. And I just wanted to look at a couple of things that we've done in the past to think about it and where, where we should be thinking about going. Because obviously, it's not, we're not just saying dump Obama, get Glass-Deagle, have a credit system. You have people mouthing these meaningless words like, oh, we have to have manufacturing. Well, for what? I mean, I'm not against manufacturing, but what are we gonna manufacture? Plastic chairs for teddy bears? I, I mean, what's the purpose of our nation? Where are we going? And, and that's really what we've gotta get thinking about. So if you look back on a few things that we did, I mean, I mentioned already the canals. This was a really big project of George Washington and the American Revolution. And then later, you had Lincoln, who was very clear on this question, and it was the transcontinental railroad. Then you had Kennedy, and you had the space program and the first landing on the moon. All of these things are American. It's part of our identity. It took a leap of creativity. Imagine thinking of the transcontinental railroad. You go down to Patterson, New Jersey, where you have the Rogers Locomotive Works, and the people building these trains. And the first train was, I don't know, a few miles in the state. It was not that exciting. But they said, no, this is the beginning. We're gonna go all the way to the West Coast. That's how they were thinking about it. And then you had under Franklin Roosevelt, again, he ran into this question of credit. He had to set up the Reconstruction Finance Corporation to get around the Federal Reserve to be able to issue, I think it was about $46 billion, which nowadays is nothing, but then for building what was built. And you had things like the Rural Electrification Administration, which Wall Street totally opposed. Why? Because they said, you can't bring electricity to all those farmhouses if they're 40 miles apart. Do you know how much it's gonna cost? It's gonna be too much money to have copper wire going 40 miles to a farmhouse. We can have electricity in the cities, but forget the farms. And FDR understood like Hamilton, no, let's have a giant debt. Because we're gonna get electricity to these farmhouses. Because guess what? When the farms have electricity, what happens to their productivity? What happens to food production if you have refrigeration? How about if you have lights for your chickens so they can lay their eggs more frequently because it's based on light cycles? Right? So you, you totally transform the entire platform of your society by this investment. And that's what they had to fight through and fight for, and it's the only thing that will work today. And these are not arbitrary projects. And this is why, I'll, I'll just say, when we get to the ones that we're gonna, that are on our website and so on, this idea of infrastructure, of doing a little thing like a little dam, a little bridge, fixing a highway, that is not gonna work. It's not going to save the nation. We have to get our nation to a whole new platform of functioning. And it's worth thinking. worth thinking, if we had trains, they just, in China, they just tested a magnetically levitated train in a vacuum tunnel, and in a vacuum, that train went 745 miles an hour. Okay? That's faster than most airplanes. And they're saying that you could probably achieve a regular speed of about 1,000 miles an hour, which means you could leave New York on a train, and go to San Francisco, and get there at the same time as you left. Right? But also, what does it mean for the country? Right? You could have a commute, an hour-long commute, and you could be in, I don't know, Kansas City or something, if you wanted to go there. Right? And so all of a sudden, everyone's relationship to how you think about the country, how you think about your job, what you think, it would all change. The entire culture would be totally different, just as a function of upgrading the transportation system, of thinking that way. So when we talk about platforms, that's what we're saying, that you actually want to cause a cultural shift of your whole population, where your population becomes better because of the breakthrough that you made. And these silly Republicans having the debate, "How do you put a dollar value on that? Oh, no, no, we should not spend any money. The only money we can spend is if we can increase taxes." Well, if everyone's unemployed, and their property taxes are already more than their mortgages, where are you going to get this great tax money from? I mean, it really is nuts. It is, forget it. It's a disaster. So now, let's look at Nawapa. People are familiar with this somewhat. But this is a project. This is not infrastructure. This is a platform. Water from Alaska into the Rocky Mountain Trench. It's, I think, about 4 billion acre-feet of water in total in this thing. Lake Mead is 38 million. So you just think, it's orders of magnitude more. You're talking about enough water to flush out the Great Lakes, all the way down to the South. And what's required to build this? Probably, we estimate, it would take five years to build the railroads. To build the railroad, so you could get the supplies that you need to these remote areas, where you have to build all these dams and tunnels and lifts. So what we're looking at is, something like doing this would take 25 to 50 years to get the full functioning out of it. And it would employ at least 7 million people, between constructing the nuclear power plants you need for some of the lifts and the projects. And this is not, if it's going to take 25 to 50 years to build, that's not a part-time construction job. That's a career. Right? And you can think of people coming in on a lower level, a less skilled level, where you're building roads and things, and they learn things, they get trained. Think about all these veterans that we have coming back, who have really, they've got some discipline, but they have mentally been destroyed. They're very pessimistic, very cynical. What if they were involved in doing something like this? Or a lot of the younger people from the inner cities? Or the thing that I found striking, my husband and I were just out in Detroit, working with Bill Roberts, our candidate out there, and you have this incredible, rich layer of our population, which is people over 60, between about 60 and 80, who, which is the age of all the most highly skilled workers in the country. And they're unemployed. And it's outrageous. And they're being told, "Get a job at McDonald's or something." This is crazy. Now, you're not going to have a 70-year-old go out and shovel or something, but if they know how to build a nuclear power plant, we need them in the workforce. We need this very rich, experienced layer of our population, participating in the development of the country. Not on Obama's health care plan with a morphine, you know, drip. Right? That's, we, you can see how the country would be transformed. Anyway, so, there's a lot more on this on our website. Then, next. This is, oh, it's really hard to read these things. You should go on our website. But, see that? That's the North Pole. This is the world from the top. You might not be used to looking at it this way. And we have this amazing phenomenon, which is very, very good, which is that all the Arctic sea ice is melting, and it's moving. And it wasn't caused by someone driving a truck, or smoking. It actually is part of these climatic cycles that we're going through in our solar system. And as LaRouche said, I think it was him who was saying, "Well, the planet sort of made a mistake, because it had all this ice on top, but it's rectifying it now." And what it means is that, all of a sudden, you're opening up all these borders, like you see, this is Canada, right? The US. Here's the Bering Strait Tunnel. All of a sudden, it becomes really a lot easier to travel this way than to go all the way around. So all of a sudden, with this potential, our borders are totally changed. Our shipping routes are totally changed. And you can begin to really push the boundaries of where people are able to live. They're talking about this little island, Kostelny in Russia. You can imagine, it's pretty cold there. I mean, it's like minus 30, 40, 50. And so what they're talking about doing is building a city there, totally enclosed, with 5,000 people in it. And the city will have to be completely self-sufficient, in terms of food, water. You're going to have to figure out how to produce all of these things, what to do with the waste, and to have it in these really incredible, sub-zero freezing temperatures. But to design it also, and this is where, you remember when the Chilean miners were stuck down there for all of those weeks? Do you remember how important NASA was? Because the astronauts, one of the things they have to figure out, if you're going to be on a space station, is you're in this little enclosed space with the same six people for months. Now, how many of you can think of six people that you'd like to be in one room with for a number of months? I mean, forget it, okay? It's rough. So what they had to figure out is, what do you do? How do you keep people's minds engaged? What kind of things do you work on? I mean, this is a real, this is science. And they were crucial for working with those miners down there, all stuck there together, and coming up with a schedule for the day, and all kinds of ways that they would not go crazy, or kill each other, or anything like that while they were there. This is very important work. So now, they're thinking of, how do you design a city where there's 5,000 people, where people have a sense that you don't feel claustrophobic, you don't feel like you see the same person at the grocery store every second, that, anyway, it's a very, very exciting challenge. And that's what they're working on, which leads us to the next question, obviously, which is establishing a man colony on Mars, which we really should be thinking about doing. Because we really have to think about the fact that we don't know what's going to happen to our planet. And people know, just in, was it October or November, this asteroid came only 200,000 miles within the Earth. It went between the Earth and the moon's orbit. Now, first of all, it's really stupid that we didn't know about this thing 30 years ago, because we should have enough satellites and, you know, equipment, monitoring devices out there in space. We should have had satellites, we should have telescopes on Mars.
[inaudible]
Yeah, right. That's true. To find out what's going on. And if you were going to have an asteroid hit, one thing that's very interesting, in terms of distances, like if you're looking at an angle of something that's close by, the angle might be very wide, if something's here, coming, you know, you'd have to hit it with a pretty big force to get it off track, to hit the Earth. But if you catch something at a very, very great distance, then maybe a small nuclear missile could knock the asteroid by a one-thousandth of a degree while it's really far away, and you could avoid the thing smashing into the Earth. We could avoid going the way of the dinosaurs. I think that would be a useful study and investment. I mean, I don't think, I mean, I don't know, maybe it's just lucky. We might not realize how lucky we are, that we haven't had an asteroid already smash us in the 2 million years that we've been here, you know? So these are things we should look at. And also, if there's some really big changing thing happening that we can't, that our planet is just going to be destroyed, it would definitely be a good thing if we would have established human colonies somewhere else in the galaxy. And that's a natural, that is what human beings should be doing. And what would be the quality of thinking of the population? What would be the relationship of a child to their science teacher, or their math teacher? You know, I often think about the idea of Dark Ages, because Eretocenes measured the circumference of the Earth in 332 B.C. So how come it took until 1492 for Columbus to come over here? Because we lost all of that, because you had the Roman Empire, and you had a collapse, and you had the, you know, the Black Death, and you just had total, and people lost their culture. And one of the things personally that I find unbearable is the idea that you could lose Beethoven, you could lose Bach, you could lose some of these incredibly beautiful things that human beings have discovered and created, because you lose the culture. Because mankind goes through a Dark Age. That's not acceptable. So this is really where mankind should be going. This is what our basement team is working on with scientists all over the world. And this is what we intend to achieve by forcing Obama out, getting Glass-Steagall passed, and getting a credit system. So that's what I have for you today.